Okay, so I have seven PM. I'll call the Land and Dairy Planning Board meeting to order for April 6, 2011. I just want to point out for everyone here that if we have an emergency need to evacuate, this room has two exits. They're at the front and the back of the room, on the right-hand side of the audience. If we do need to leave, we ask you to proceed through the exit closest to you, go outside, move away from the building, don't come in till our fire officials have instructed everyone to do so. And I ask for them to please rise for pledge allegiance to our honor of the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, this should be relatively a short meeting to- tonight, since we had things to do in our second meeting of the month is going to be quite busy. I figure we'd do as much as we can to alleviate things there. Let's see, Lynn is away on business, traveling, and I'll appoint Dana to vote for Lynn. And we've got eight voting members right now. The voting member that is missing is the town council ex officio, Tom Freida. And Tom is newly appointed to the ex officio position for the ensuing year, and he's also a previous member of the planning board. So you should be familiar with the operation. Let's see, we will- something else I was going to say, I don't remember right now, but I'll probably come to- come to mind. But we'll proceed to administrative boardwork. Second half of the meeting with new plans, we have no new applications. So this meeting is handling administrative boardwork. The first item we have is the election of officers, which is an annual event. And I'll take any nominations. I'll start with chair.
Make a motion to nominate Art Rug.
Okay, I have a motion by Chris, second by Dana. Any- any other nominations, let's see? Seeing none, I guess all- all in favor of my nomination or I guess my ascendancy to the chairmanship again signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, and I will abstain. Next office we have is for vice chair, and I'll open the floor for nominations for vice chair. Or I mean, I'll take a motion for anyone for vice chair.
Make a motion for Mary.
I have a motion by Rick for Mary, second by Chuck. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, there's only one nominee, and I'll- seeing none, we'll proceed and vote for Mary as nominee and ascendancy to the vice chairmanship again. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Yeah, what's affirmative? Am I abstaining at all, Mary?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I go for myself.
Doesn't make any difference, anyway. Yeah, that's happened before, so we know about that. So no abstentions, and Mary is vice chair. And I'll take a motion for secretary, who's currently Chuck.
Nominate Chuck.
Motion by Mary for Chuck, second by Dana. Any other nominations for secretary? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of Chuck's nomination and ascendancy to the chair, since you're the only one of secretary, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? And chair votes affirmative, and you are secretary again, Chuck. You do, huh? And Lynn has indicated that he is willing to serve as assistant secretary, so.
So nominated.
Dana's motion, second by Rick, for Lynn to be our assistant secretary. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of the nomination of Lynn Wiles and Lynn to be our assistant secretary signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Chair votes affirmative, and Lynn is again our assistant secretary.
We also have two liaison- three liaison positions to recommend tonight. We need two for the CIP committee, and we need a heritage commission person.
Okay, I know Rick has served on the CIP, I think Mary has also.
Yeah, I did this last one.
You still interested?
Yes.
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay. And heritage commission, I've been doing that for a long time. Andre.
I had a question as to what is a CIP?
Oh, okay. CIP is a capital proven plan. It's by charter, we have a separate committee that puts it together comprised of town council members, school board members, planning board members, budget committee members, and both the school and town finance person.
The actual committee is made up of two planning board members, one town counselor, one school board member, one budget committee member, and each of those has the opportunity to have alternates. The staff is myself, Sue Hickey, the finance director, and Peter Kuro, who's the school business administrator.
Thank you.
Do you need a nomination for that?
The projects that go in there are projects greater than a hundred thousand.
And a useful life of at least five years.
Plans, and the third category is.
It's anything with a cost of at least a hundred thousand dollars and a useful life of five years.
Yep.
So, okay.
Just wanted to give you the big perspective.
The explanation, I was just numb on the abbreviation. Thank you.
It's terrible government ones. I'm not up to- off with all of them, but you know, when you hear something, you understand, please ask. Probably what we'll do is do it in a motion for both Rick and Mary for membership. Yeah, and then I'll do the heritage commission, so.
Second.
Okay, motion by Chris, and second by Dana. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Chair votes affirmative. And we've got, I think that's all we got, because Dana is currently the open space task force.
And that's- that's a closed process, that once that process is done, that membership ends, so there's no need to reappoint for that. We will, at some point in the coming months, need to appoint somebody to the planning board steering- to the master plan steering committee, but we'll get to that discussion a little bit later.
Yeah.
So how do we need to nominate you for the heritage?
Motion for Art Rug liaison to the heritage commission.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor, seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Chair votes affirmative. I'll do it again, so.
Thank you.
And welcome to- welcome, Tom.
Thank you.
You've been here before, but also congratulations on your election to the- as counselor, and.
Thank you very much.
So you know the ropes of the planning board, so.
Try to remember.
It'll come right- it'll come right back, believe me.
Except he doesn't have to shuffle- he doesn't have to shuffle through the paper this time, though.
Okay, next item we have to do is plans to sign. This is the Young Subdivision on Litchfield Road.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff can report that all conditions of approval have been met on the project, and we recommend signature of the plans.
So moved.
Motion by Mary, second by Dana, for the chair secretary to sign the Young Subdivision site plan at Litchfield Road. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Chair votes affirmative, and the Young Subdivision plans will be signed at the conclusion of the meeting tonight. Okay, we have an extension request. Butrick Professional Offices Phase Five Site Plan, request of one-year extension.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your packet you'll find a letter from Bob Neisner, the president of DHB Homes, requesting an additional one-year extension on the final approval of the project. Again, due to the current economic and financial conditions, they're not sure when they'll be able to start the project, so they are asking for an additional year. Their current conditional approval actually expires next month, so this is in a month in advance. So staff is supportive of the request, as no changes have been made to the ordinances and regulations that impact the project.
So moved.
A motion by Dana?
Second.
Second by Rick. That one year is till today's.
It'll be one year from the date of the current expiration.
Okay, okay. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Chair votes affirmative. And Butrick Professional Offices have a one-year extension on their site plan. This has been frequently, I think it's a reflection of the economy, that. We have another extension request. Milne Subdivision Phase Two, request additional year on final approval.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your packet you'll find a letter from Thomas Quinn, attorney for the Milnes. You may recall, this project was actually a two-phase project. The initial phase was a lotline adjustment for the property with Joe and Linda Ryan, which was signed and approved by the planning board. It has now been two years since the approval for the subdivision portion of this. By regulation, conditional approval is good for two years in a subdivision. They are extenuating circumstances relative to the mortgage and a variety of other reasons outlined in the letter from the attorney. Again, there have been no changes to the ordinances or regulations that impact this project, and staff is supportive of the request.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion by Dana?
Second.
Second by Rick. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Chair votes affirmative, and the Milne Subdivision Phase Two has a one-year extension requested. We have another extension request. Don't say this all quickly, but Water Wonder's Site Plan, request additional one year on the- for conditional approval.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your packet you'll find a letter from Bill Davidson of Hoyle Tanner Associates. This project was granted an extension back last May for an additional one year. Their current conditional approval will expire in May of this year. There are two remaining conditions of approval that have yet to have been completed. However, the plans themselves are complete and ready to move forward. The client on the property has requested that the planning board continue the- excuse me, extend the approval while they continue marketing and looking to secure a tenant for the property. We have discussed the- this with the applicant. There's also a letter in there from myself to the applicant, basically understanding that the only two conditions of approval are met are financial in nature and the lot merger associated with the project. Otherwise, the plan is ready to be signed, so he has that in his pocket and able to use that as part of his marketing, that the project is essentially approved, save for the condition number eight and condition number thirteen. Again, there are no changes to the ordinances and regulations that impact the project, and staff is supportive of the request.
Okay, this is May 6, 2012.
Correct.
So moved.
Motion by Dana, second by Rick. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Chair votes affirmative, and Water Wonder's Site Plan has a one-year extension. Approval signing in minutes of March 2nd and March 9th of 2011. I'll take those separately in case anyone was absent and needs to abstain.
Make a motion on the motion. Second, minutes?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mary, second by Chuck, approval of the- March 2nd minutes, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And abstentions? And chair votes affirmative, and the planning board minutes of March 2nd, 2011 are approved. Okay, March 9th.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mary, second by Dana. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? And chair votes affirmative, and the minutes of March 9th, 2011 are approved. Moving right along here, we're doing good. Discussion of the town staff.
We want to do the regular discussions first, then we can talk master plan after that.
Oh, okay. Anything else?
Just two things from my perspective. Monday night, the town council did adopt the zoning ordinance recommendation for the change to the ordinance for the updating of the Route 28 Western Segment corridor study and impact fee methodology, and likewise adopted the methodology and the option that was recommended by the planning board for the implementation of those fees. So those are now in place, and will be moving forward. We'll also be keeping an eye on the impact those impact fees having on development at the request of the council to make sure that they aren't having a negative impact on our economic development efforts moving forward. Secondly, is on more of a personal note and more of an announcement, the month of April is Autism Awareness Month. It's a cause obviously near and dear to my heart, affects my family directly. And also here locally, the Joint Loss Management Committee is hosting and sponsoring the Apple Blossom 5K Walk for Autism on May 1st here at the Moose Hill Kindergarten and through the Moose Hill Orchards. That was a very successful endeavor last year, and we're hopeful that this year will be as successful as well. And well, myself, my wife, and my family are participating again, and would certainly appreciate any sponsorships or anybody who's willing to donate and support of the walk. We'd appreciate it greatly.
Oh, thanks, Tim. Thanks for letting us know. It's a Saturday, hopefully it'll be warm and sunny.
It was last year, it was a beautiful day last year.
Yeah, it certainly was.
You scared me there, Tom. With that, I have a personal announcement.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Outside of the master plan, I'm all set for tonight.
Okay, I'll- board have any?
We also have Andre across the way, too, as well.
Oh, no, I'm good.
Okay, I get two things. One is 2011 local officials workshops. Anyone interested in attending? I got a neat little flyer here. The closest one, I think, is Monday, May 9th, in Brentwood Community Center, Brentwood. Didn't see any in Manchester, but you get one of these, Tom?
I did.
Okay. Joe, you get one of these? It's very worthwhile to attend, because it's highly educational. And my experience as a new selectman, that was the first thing I did, and like a whole new world out there, so, believe me, it is beneficial. And the National Association has a lot of good information, and they're a good resource also. And second thing I got is Saturday, June 11, 2011, is the Eighteenth Annual Spring Planning and Zoning Conference, and this is in Manchester at the Radisson Hotel.
I believe I'd emailed the board about that a while back.
Yeah, I think it was an email. I got a hard copy here that came in the mail. I'll put in a read file for anyone to- if anyone's interested. That's another worthwhile thing. I haven't been to one in a while, and it does chew up a Saturday. You hope it rains, but it is another worthwhile thing. I encourage any- well, any counselor or board member to take advantage of that also. You meet a lot of people that are doing the same thing you're doing, and.
I've done my fair share of presenting at those conferences. They really are a worthwhile process for board members, and people who are doing the presentations learn stuff every time as well.
I think the last one I went to was up in Concord, so.
They used to hold them at the Tack in Concord.
Yeah.
There you go. The first year that I was on the board, I attended a day-long conference. It was very informative.
Okay, we'll go.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to let you know I won't be here next Wednesday. I'm going to be in Washington at the eighth grade.
Oh.
So I'm sorry to- yeah, I'm sorry to miss the- the meeting. I'll see if I can catch you on, you know, TV.
Yeah, you can catch us, we have many more.
Catch you live streaming.
I'll text you if I have any comments.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I will be away next week. I have a business trip, sticking in the country, so. If I text you, it'll be very long distance. But I probably will send you an email with some comments and feedback on that.
Okay, good.
To that end, there was a- we've- I think we've all received various emails from interested parties. I presume those are going to have to be put into the public record, because they got sent to all of us.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Tim has them all, because I got a pile of them. And actually, what Tim and Andre have been doing is going through all the questions, statements, comments, and everything, and basically separating the questions out, because there's a lot of statements, there's a lot of quasi-question editorialization.
That was going to- sometimes going to ask whether the staff or whether, you know, they can work with.
We'll have those for next week.
So basically, it's a sifting of the, you know.
A spreadsheet would be perfect, because reading through the materials is quite laborious, and having it, the issues outlined in a spreadsheet, certainly for the developer, too, would probably be a lot easier to.
I was asked to actually put them in a PowerPoint, so I could have them up on the screen during the meeting.
Can you send that to us electronically as well, because I'll be out of the country. I'd like to look through that and maybe have some feedback.
The questions we're going to separate into questions that can be answered in the master plan, what we do know already, and then those at the site plan, because we did, I think it was two meetings ago, did some of the questions that we could answer, the bulk of them we couldn't answer, because we aren't at that point.
That was back in January, actually.
There was also a mix of questions that are applicable to the board and the council, and some that were to the developer.
Correct.
Yes, yeah.
So they can be categorized and separated out and organized.
It's going to be categorized, so we can.
I'm still weeding.
Okay.
Yeah, we try to get some rationale.
Just as long as someone's doing it, because it was tough to collate all of that in my head.
Okay, we'll proceed to the master plan, then, Tim.
Well, just another thought, too, if anybody, I know I've been, I haven't been able to make many of them, but Art and I have been to at least one of the meetings over there on Saturday morning, and it's been excellent.
They're still also holding the meetings on Thursday evening, too?
Yes, Thursday evening, yeah, because they're still meeting Thursday evening, 7:00 to 9:00, and Saturday mornings, 9:00 to 11:00 AM. And I was at a Saturday one with Dana. There was probably maybe ten.
About eight, eight or ten, yeah.
Yeah, other people, and it was a good, really good discussion, getting, just bouncing ideas around, and you learn stuff, too. I mean, there was one guy there that was definitely knowledgeable of it, and he just.
And I think people should feel.
He read the books also.
Yeah, that helps. I think people should feel that they don't have to go and stay for two hours. They can go and, you know, look around, ask questions, and then leave. They don't, it's not like a formal meeting. It's supposed to be an informal session if you have questions to go in and ask, and then you can leave if you want.
I mean, both, and both John and Mike, I was very impressed. They're just hungry for input. So I mean, you know, anybody in the public that's listening, if they have questions, concerns, go. They want you to. They want to listen, so.
Yeah, educational. I'm learning. Okay, anything else? That will, floor goes to Tim, who, this is kind of the kickoff or master plan, because.
Oh, there was one other thing.
Okay.
Sorry. The, there was a bill going through the, up in Concord. I think it passed the House, and it's now in committee in the Senate regarding workforce housing.
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to keep an eye roll on that as to how that's going to affect us, or if it will.
The reading I have on it, from my reading of the bill, is that it basically would create and make workforce housing essentially an enabling legislation, so that if communities wanted to adopt workforce housing, they're free to do so, but they would not be required.
So that would then have to go onto the Tuesday ballot as to whether we adopt it or not?
We already have.
Okay.
So it wouldn't have any impact, Lenandary, that I can see unless there's a move to repeal what has already previously been approved.
So someone would have to put a, an item on that one, okay?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, who knows what will happen with the process anyway, so, but it's definitely to keep, something to keep our eye on.
Yeah.
So thanks for bringing it up. Yeah, a whole bunch of things I'm trying to keep track of up there, because they do shuffle things. They tend to like to land use stuff they get involved with.
There's actually a good legislative tracker on the New Hampshire Planners Association website that tracks most all land use planning-related bills. There's a spreadsheet where they have all the bills that have been introduced, their status, where they are in the process, so I'd encourage you to take a look at that if you're interested.
Yeah, I mean, any board member is free to respond as an individual to, not encumbered by the United Party.
The state also has, the legislature also has a very good site where you can read the bills, see who voted on what.
Yeah, I know when what was adopted two years ago, I think it was Senate Bill 342, we as a board did write in opposition to it.
Right.
Yeah, and that was discussed here, and we voted on it as a board, and, but it wasn't listened to, so, is where we are. Okay, anything else? All set. But if you get something, write it down, I'll get you. Okay, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Wanted to take advantage of the light agenda tonight to start some initial discussions on game planning, where we are with the 2012 master plan update. As you all know, the final piece of the funding was approved at town meeting back in March. So Andre and I are starting to put together schedules and framework, and we wanted to start running some of these by you tonight. The first page of the document you'll find in your packet are two diagrams. The basic process diagram and a little bit more detailed process diagram as to how we envision this process moving forward. The second page is really what I want to get to tonight. That is some questions for the board. Questions one and two, I don't expect you to answer here tonight. These are more to get you thinking and start putting your ideas together. The first question is, what are the critical local issues and issues of concern that we need to be thinking about for the master plan? And then secondly, what conditions have changed since the '04 master plan, and how do these changes relate to those critical local issues? So those are the two bigger vision-type questions that I'd like to have the board start thinking about. Take a look back at the '04 master plan if you haven't looked at it in a while, and start perhaps brainstorming some ideas. Feel free to pass them along to Andre and I via email, but we'll be discussing these things a little bit in more detail as we move forward in the process. The third question is outlining what we want to be included within the master plan. We had a discussion several months ago that the consensus of the board was to go with a comprehensive-style master plan, and the outline here indicates the proposed chapters that we had outlined then. I just wanted to make sure that the board was still on board with those. The first two are the vision and land use statements. Those are mandatory by statute. We can't drop those. The other chapters, we want the board to consider are transportation, economic development, community facilities, natural hazards and natural resources, public services and utilities, cultural historic resources, housing, regional concerns, community design, and the other chapter we absolutely would recommend is implementation plan. So is there anything on that list that you feel we don't need to cover, or if there's anything you'd like to see added? I'd appreciate some feedback on that tonight.
What, Tim?
Real quick, what would you call, I'm thinking because of what we're going through with Woodmont right now, and everything is, all of this encompass the things that are currently here, do they encompass everything?
I would think so.
Is going to bring about, or is?
Their Woodmonts would be, in my opinion, would be covered by land use, transportation, community facilities, natural resources, utilities and public services, housing, regional concerns, and community design. All of those things would be covered by the Woodmont project.
If there was any one thing that encompassed all of it that we needed to add?
It's certainly something the board, if you want to consider having a specific section dedicated just to that project, it's certainly something we could take a look at, but it's a little bit, it's a little different, because until we actually have the PUD master plan adopted, it's really, it's a chicken and egg situation, really.
And also, this is a 10,000-foot level type of document, whereas Woodmont is an actual project that we're looking at. And I think some of the, the vision statement that we have for each one of these sections will lay the ground for what decisions we make in the future, how, what land use plan we come up with, or what, how we approach each one of those categories, and even how we look at projects like Woodmont Orchards.
Because what comes out of the, this new master plan in 2012 may very well lead to amendments to the PUD ordinance or modifications and things of that nature.
Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, just, you know, as you say, 10,000-foot view, but I'm thinking that as we go through this, we maybe want to keep that in the back of our minds about, you know, the PUD, you know, ordinance and everything, and think about what changes we may want to make or recommend. You know, so that, you know, I mean, we're all walking new ground here right now. And, you know, maybe, you know, we've all got 2020 hindsight, but try to figure out some things going forward.
And I would not be surprised as when we get into the land use section in particular. If you recall back in the '04 plan, we actually had designated subareas that we looked at within the land use overview. And I certainly think that Woodmont would probably likely be one of the subareas we look at in more detail.
And also with regard to the PUD, if I may, whatever comes up, comes out of this master plan, it will not only just affect the PUD, it will affect conservation subdivision that we pass, the way we approach housing, the way we approach economic development. I mean, it's going to have an impact on everything that we do, and how we look at it, and how we want to see it completed in the future, so. Although the Woodmont Common is the hot and heavy project now, this is a little bit broader than that. This is how we want to see Lenandary, or what the people want to see Lenandary in 2022.
Yeah, it's probably as, as big, probably really bigger than Woodmont, because this encompasses.
It's the whole town.
This is the policy direction for our department and this board, is to, you know, what we've been doing over the last seven or eight years has been a result of what we did in 2004 with that master plan. That's how we move forward with the goals and objectives of our department, and hopefully the board as well.
Yeah, I mean, it took us two years, because we started early 2003, and I know in the spring we had a big, I think about 300 people together for cookout. Food gets people in, you know, so, and that was a brainstorming session, and then we had another session. It was in October. That was an all-day thing over at the high school gym.
Yeah.
That had at least 100, maybe a couple hundred people. That had at least a hundred, maybe a couple hundred people. And also, really good ideas that came, that came out of that.
That was part of our best towns process, and as a matter of fact, that's one of the questions we have down here, is, is whether or not we want to follow a best towns like process. I, I think the visioning process, you know, the visioning process was used, I should say, the best towns process back in two thousand and three was what we used in order to do, to create the vision for our master plan. There's some items in there that were more townwide issues, but there, I think the majority of the, the best towns process was used the vision, as a, as a vision statement for the various aspects of the master plan back in two thousand and four. So, I definitely.
I think you need that visioning process at the beginning.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's, go back to the process diagram.
I have to ask a few questions. So, commercial development, what's going on with land use, is that right?
Yes. Land use and more economic development.
And then based on the conversation that we've had regarding Woodmont, is Woodmont treated as a separate entity, and this is outside of the scope? Or are we looking to encompass what we're talking about here into the Woodmont project?
Woodmont is a separate, it's a PUD master plan, which is specific just to that parcel of land, which will then basically spell out exactly what can be developed on that property. It will basically become the replacement zoning for that six hundred and fifty plus acres.
So what we're talking about here from a master plan perspective will not have impact on that particular piece of property?
It, it will, it will, depending on where they are in the process, when the master plan gets completed.
And the reason why I ask that, Tim, and what, what I want to make sure that we're cognizant of, is we're talking about going out as far as we're going out with our master plan, and we're talking about twelve percent of our development of the town into that Woodmont Orchards area that's going to last twenty to twenty-five years. To me, it makes an awful lot of sense to ensure that the, the direction that we're driving this plan also coincides, and they, they work with each other as we move forward. Otherwise, we're going to have two separate plans moving forward for, one for twelve percent of the, the land use, and then the rest of the town.
What has been very beneficial, that Woodmont has come up at this point, is that we have already gathered a tremendous amount of information because of the many charrettes that they've had. Not that that's all encompassing, but it gives us, you know, an idea of what people are willing to accept in that area, knowing that somebody has purchased it and that that developer has rights. They are also cognizant of what our town vision is, and, and how to best build something that will not destroy our town, basically.
I, I agree, and I tend to disagree on some of those issues, one being, while the developer has rights, so does the town.
Sure.
And what they're asking for are changes to our existing zoning policies for their own zoning rights.
Under a rule that we passed, and gave them the option to do.
That does not grant them unlimited rights to the use of that land.
Not at all.
Right.
And invests the approval process with this board.
Right.
Right. So my, my point is that if we're going down this road, and this is a long-term project, we should ensure that, that the, the rules that we want to encompass into this master plan also encompass that existing project to some extent, or at least follow. Mary, you're right, and this is where I agree, that we have done a lot of due diligence, we do have a lot of information on how to move forward, and we should take advantage of those things. But I think simply saying that because a developer has, has a large chunk of land, and under the, the current rulings that we have, that we should cut a blank.
That's not what I'm saying, I'll do.
Yeah, and also, going back to the two thousand and four master plan, in it, it, you know, lays out a, like a village district type of, type of thing.
And it also called for utilization of newer mixed-use innovative types of zoning tools.
Looking at a big land area which is up off of, you know, north of Route twenty-eight, north and east of Route twenty-eight, but also in the Route one oh-two area, and especially next to four area, it calls for looking at innovative land use, uses, you know, possible rezoning for like higher density type of uses. So there is foresight, that's in two thousand and four master plan, that leads up to the, you know, PUD that is current, or at least has been asked for.
And the, the other important thing to remember between the difference between towns' master plan and a PUD master plan, is the PUD master plan will essentially have the force of law when it's approved, because it will set regulations that have to be followed for future development. Whereas the town master plan is a policy document only, it does not have any force of law. It's only when you implement the zoning ordinances and the other regulations that it really becomes force of law at that point.
So given that statement, Tim, I think it's very important that we fully understand what rights we give to that.
Absolutely.
And, and that we ensure that we're not giving up, you know, our, our futures as, as we move through this.
Yeah, because the whole design was to give the town planning board the control of it, you know, not the developers.
I had a question, other, other.
I had Dana, Andre, then Dana, I'll go to you, Chris.
And this is one of the areas that is one of, I just want to make sure we caution ourselves and not to wrap this document around one development, because we, we also have a sizable piece of land out in, in the Pettingill Road area, we have another sizable piece of land in the Jackson Bridge Road area. We have a lot of undeveloped residential land here in London area, I mean, we, we have over, over five thousand acres left to be developed. So I just don't want, you know, this process to be wrapped around one project, and therefore, if it doesn't specifically address that project, it's going to be deemed a failure, whereas this is a lot broader. Again, we're at the ten thousand foot level that we're looking at everything where we want London area to be ten years from now. And, and every aspect as identified in, in the, in the list here, we're going to be taking a look at. Will this have an impact, will this have an impact on Woodmont? It may, but that project is, is working on the way, and the board, the board has a lot of work to do with regard to structuring that in accordance with the laws that were adopted. But, but this document also will have impact on future PUDs, you know, if we want to, if we want to continue down that road, depending on what's the, what comes out of this master plan. So I just, I just want to just caution the board and, and hopefully subsequent steering committees that this is such a big process, and it's, as you, as those that have sat on the board, on the steering committee and the planning boards in the past, it's a two, two and a half year process that you, that, you know, one year we as staff just spent just getting to this point where we can have something before you, a game plan, of how to, how to go about that, and that's pulling all the other documents that we've used in the past, the ninety-eight, eighty-seven master plan, the nineteen ninety-seven master plan, the two thousand and four master plan, past, past open space plans, past housing plans that we developed out of result, the historic preservation plans. Every plan that we developed, we put on, had in a pile here and said, these are the things that we have to take a look at, that we wanted to achieve, and then also, the board and the steering committee will have to take a look at where we want to be ten years from now. So I, I just want to make sure we're not too entwined on one project that we're looking at, London area as a whole, and every aspect of London area as a whole.
Okay, Dana, I'll go first.
I agree with that a hundred percent, Andre, and same thing with Tim. I think, you know, because I was on the steering committee of the last one, and looking at just how much has changed just since then, as far as the economy and everything else. Myself, I really want this one to look at all the developed areas. And, you know, the last one, a lot of the focus was on, you know, trying to keep things as they are. And my personal opinion is that we need to look more to the future. I mean, let's face reality, gas prices and everything else aren't going down. So I think that's maybe something we need to look at in looking forward.
And the other, the other thing to remember is the oh-four plan was more of a strategic plan, it wasn't a full-blown comprehensive plan, so it didn't have the full breadth that we're looking to do this time around.
Yeah, and I mean, I know there's a lot of controversy, you know, the style that Woodmont is going to be with, you know, the walking community and everything. Yet, the more I look into it, and the more I read in the news, that seems to be the way things are going. Wyndham is looking at one right now. It was just in the paper last night.
So is Stradivarius.
So, I mean, I think we need to definitely keep that in mind as we go down the, the master plan path.
So, so, okay, Chris?
Regarding the PUD, from what, Andres, following on from what Andres said. I think it would be important that one aspect of the master plan pulls out is the target areas where we would consider PUD, and that definitively would be one of the items that has to be in the master plan, and get the public input on that, as to where they're comfortable with that. And further to Dana's comment, the public feeling of, you know, the, the urban development that is Woodmont volat, Woodmont Orchards, what's the public, you know, what's the general public, that, you know, we've got a group of people here, but I'd hope we get out of those public meetings, where do they want us to go with that? Is that, is that the direction they want to go? Do they have misgivings about it? You know, there's, you know, a lot more people in London area than just this board, and they never ever come into the meetings. But I hope that out of this.
I mean, I, I get a lot of input from various people I bump into, and it's a.
But, yeah, you know, further from what Dana's, Dana's saying, and, and what Andre's saying, I'd like to see that we identify the areas where we're considering that, and be very upfront with the, with the public that they understand that part of the master plan is where we would leverage, because it's such a different from, from the other zoning, where we would leverage it in the town.
I mean, it's, it's a change from the last, very really forty years of zoning, you know, it's.
Yeah, it's a dramatic change.
In this part of the country, it's, in this part of the country, it's relatively new, but they've been utilized all over the country. PUDs is not a new tool in planning terms, it's been around since the seventies, even before then.
Because London area had a planned residential development ordinance before it was placed with a conservation overlay, main conservation subdivision. So it, it's on the same scale, so it was just purely.
I, I think the difference here is it's the mix of stuff that can go into this, that, that, you know, because of what could go in there, we need to very clearly identify where those might be in town.
The concerns that I get are the uncertainty, you know, and that's what we have to identify. It's up to us to identify what we, what we're certain, and what we're comfortable with, and what the town is comfortable with.
Yeah.
There's going to be a lot of give or take between this board and the town for us to get things figured out, you know, that we're comfortable with.
So back to question three, any, any other things you want to see in the list for chapters or deletions?
Can I ask a question? You mentioned twelve percent, what was that number that you were talking about?
The twelve percent number is the, I, I believe that, and this was used by the Wood, the Woodmont people, that that represents twelve percent of the buildable land within the town.
The buildable land.
Right.
Now, I'd have to verify.
Yeah, that's, that's what I heard from.
Well.
They would have to verify it.
If you have five thousand acres and you have five hundred acres, that's ten percent, so.
Yeah, so you're six hundred and something, right.
You know, no, but I'm saying it's reasonable.
Yeah. But actually, a lot of the good buildable land in London area has already been taken for, for housing, so it doesn't leave a lot of desirable. That's why we've been getting a lot of, you know, two lot, three lot subdivisions, is because they're trying to eke out, you know, a little bit of money here and there to do something with the land. The big, the big stuff is controlled by individuals that have sat on it for a while, especially the airport area.
I'm sure that it would come out as part of the process where you would look at what we had said last time that we wanted for an implementation process or program, and what has been implemented and what still needs to be done. But is that something that you could bring to the board as a general?
Well, so, that's, that's something, I, I can tell you right off the top of my head that the ninety-seven plan, before we adopted two thousand and four, we'd implemented over eighty-five percent of the recommendations from that plan. I haven't done an actual evaluation of two thousand and four plan yet, but I'd say we're probably in the neighborhood of fifty to sixty percent.
Okay, so I guess I'd be interested to know the forty percent that wasn't able to be implemented in.
The, the biggest one that comes to mind is the Town Center Task Force was never established, we never got, going on the town center area.
Yeah.
Could morph into a village district.
Sense a general comfort level with those chapters?
Something, maybe this is the wrong place for it, but, and it's definitely not something that we need now, but when we start down this, it would be nice if there was some bullets or just an outline of, you know, the original master plan, and then the next one, you know, what the changes were between them, just so we get a little, whoever's on the committee has a little history of where we were and where we've gone, and.
I probably wouldn't want to go much further back than ninety-seven on that, but I could certainly take a look at ninety-seven.
I think it would be helpful to whoever is going to be on the steering committee to have that information and get an idea of where we were and where we've come, and might give them some insight as to where we want to go.
Yep.
There's an ID sixty-nine master plan that if it was ever adopted, things would have been a lot easier for us today if it was ever adopted.
It was a comprehensive one as well.
And there was definitely, back then, there was definitely some good, good, good vision going on, and, you know, I don't have the history of why it never got adopted, but only from reading through some of the town reports and everything, and it's like, gee, where was it adopted? It never was.
All right, so moving on to the next question, which is more of a general question, whether or not people are comfortable with the process diagrams from the first page, in terms of the strategy moving forward.
That seems very clear.
That's pretty neat.
Board, can I pull over that question?
Yes.
I know we're going to send out RFQs to different places. Is that something that we would want to do prior to forming the committee, so that we
Yeah.
have those ready to go when the committee's formed, they can look at.
The RFP itself, yeah, Andre and I will work on the basic structure of the RFP. That if, once we get past this page with the questions, my next page is actually scheduling in terms of how we expect to.
I mean, because I know, if I remember right, the last time, we really didn't send anything out till after we formed the committee.
Yeah, we think last time, we, we had the outline ready to go, but we wanted to get the input of the steering committee before we went forward, and make sure there was, was, we sure had met their expectations as well.
Yeah.
And then, and then we sent it out and, and then formed a.
I'll skip forward.
While you were there.
Right.
We formed a subcommittee and.
I was just thinking, you know, because I mean, we probably went through four, three or four meetings.
Sure.
Or more, just going over the basic stuff when I, I think we have a good idea.
I've skipped forward a little bit, what are we going to do in the next two months is to get the steering committee created, get the appointments from all the boards and committees, then between June and August, start working on the RFP with the steering committee, and then confirm the draft of the RFP with the planning board, and then advertise probably in late August, I guess.
Tim, RFP?
Request for proposals.
Request for proposals.
Okay, okay, that's all right, Laura.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just looking for a way to maybe, you know, I don't want to rush it, but I don't want to delay it needless to.
Certainly.
Of the, of the members, did we have the Historical Society on there last time around?
We did not.
Okay.
We just had the Heritage Commission.
Most people in Heritage Commission belong to the Historical Society anyways, takes care of that.
Seeing no issues with the process diagrams, getting to the question Andre had alluded to, should we have a separate best towns style visioning process, separate from the master plan itself? Or should we make sure that that's part of the actual master plan process and integrate it with the consultant's proposal?
I would, I would combine it.
Yeah.
I think it would make it easier, I was hoping you said that.
Thank you.
I know, because we had the eighty-four master plan, then it was an eighty-eight, which is kind of like a refresh of the eighty-four. But out of that came what we call London area two thousand, so it's really dated now. And that was a, really a visioning committee that we had several sessions at the high school, like on Saturdays, to get stuff down. And that kind of formed the groundwork for the, what was the ninety-seven master plan.
And lastly, question wise tonight, number six is the fourteen-member steering committee approach comparable to two thousand and four, agreeable to everybody. It would include a representative from the planning board, one from the town council, from the school board, budget committee, zoning board, conservation commission, heritage commission, housing redevelopment authority, somebody from the Parks and Rec community, a member of the business community, someone from London area railways, and then three at-large members, one from the north, central, and southern parts of town.
I think that, it worked good for two thousand and four plan. In fact, I think one individual was at large, was, I think it was Barbara, she passed away.
Barbara DiOrenzo.
Yeah, she became a member of the ZPA, she was interested in.
One was, well, one from the business community.
Don Moskowitz.
Yeah.
Yeah, Don Moskowitz.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we clarify, a business, a resident business community.
That's, that was my next question. Does it, do you want to require that that person be a resident of London area, or somebody who has a business in London area?
I think it's easy if they were in, in the town, because otherwise, in evening meetings, they might want to be doing other things. You know, but I think if someone was in the town, they would have more attachment to it.
Right, I think you're.
Because Dawn was perfect.
Covering both, um.
Yeah, and he brought food.
Yeah, he had pizza.
Right, that's what it was done with at that point.
Okay, I'll make sure that that's noted.
So can we change those resident pizza owners?
It does.
Who's the pizza owner now?
It does narrow the pool of potential people. It does narrow the pool of potential people, but. We will work with that. All right. Uh, lastly, I just wanted to go over, actually, uh, schedule-wise. Again, uh, April, May, we're looking at getting the steering committee created, uh, asking for appointments for all those boards, committee, and the public. Uh, from June to August, it would be really working on the RFP, uh, with the steering committee. Uh, August to September, uh, would be, uh, interviewing, uh, prospective consultants with the steering committee, uh, making a recommendation to the planning board for confirmation and getting the town manager to sign the contract. Uh, then December, uh, October to December would be the, uh, development of the plan, uh, by the consultant. Uh, actually, it's October of eleven to December two thousand and twelve, that's a, the longer period, uh, which would be the visioning, the research, the workshops and outreach, the development of drafts and revisions. Uh, that would then be presented, uh, workshop format to the planning board, and then ultimately a public hearing of the planning board for adoption. Uh, hopefully by early two thousand thirteen, presentation to the town council. And then from two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty, uh, would be the ongoing implementation of the plan. And then the last page is, uh, Andre and I have discussed, uh, trying to come up with a branding or a, a title for this master plan so that it's something that sticks, it's, uh, measurable, memorable to the community and something that, uh, has some meaning. Uh, so we started brainstorming some titles. Our initial list is here, uh, on the page. But if any of you have any creative ideas for, uh, a title for this master plan, we would love to hear it.
We have a context. Maybe the school kids could get involved or something.
It's, it's, it's one of those things that, uh, unfortunately, given the timing of when we're doing it, if it was a couple of years earlier, we could have called it the twenty-twenty plan, because Andre and I both, uh, look at the Concord twenty-twenty vision, which is a process that the town, City of Concord did, uh, back in the late nineteen nineties, uh, that I was a member of, uh, steering committee on in Concord. It's just one of those things that it sticks, that people remember it, it's, it's something that people and residents can always think of that when they hear master, oh, that's the twenty-twenty vision. Uh, so we're trying to come up with something that is easily recognizable by, by members of the public and our appointed boards, committees, and elected officials.
Do you think school kids, or, I know fourth graders always go through.
I would, I would do that, sure.
Uh, you know, historical, uh, presentation. But, yeah, maybe check it out, see if.
Especially for, because then.
Yeah, I'll bring it to the board and.
Sure.
We can have them.
Okay, we've got plenty of time on that.
Get some slack or something, you know, and we.
Yeah, anyone, anyone here, anyone listening, has got to brainstorm, just email it in or.
Maybe we can do it as a, as a, as a school-type project where you have the north, south, and, and central schools all, all participate as a, uh, best, best entry type thing.
Sure. That'd be great.
Okay, I'll, I'll bring it up.
Can you even have him design the cover?
That's all I had tonight. Uh, like I said, uh, the, the two first, the first two questions, I'd like you guys to start thinking about. And, uh, again, if you have thoughts, questions, please let Andre and I know, but, uh, uh, this is going to be a project that you're going to be seeing us come back to you on, uh, working with the steering committee over the next couple of years, so, uh, excited to, uh, get the process starting again.
Yeah. It, it is a, uh, I found the previous ones fun and exciting and you can let your mind go. And you get some really good discussions with other people. That's the best part of it.
This is why people like me become professional planners, is this type of process.
Yeah. What gets your excitement going in your life, you know? Okay.
Thank you.
We got, uh, are you all set then, Tim?
Yes.
Okay, well, one, uh, item, and, uh, from Tom, and I think it's a good idea, is a developer's handbook. And you found the one from Dover.
Dover, right.
And then, um, Tim had actually done one for the ZBA in, uh, City of Rochester. So, uh, but I'll, I'll let you, uh, explain to the board what you have for, uh, ideas.
Well, while I was looking, uh, around, trying to prepare for the, my appointment to the, the planning board, I, uh, I came upon this, um, in the city of Dover, and it's a, um, developer's handbook. And, and it's not so much a developer's handbook, but what it does is provide a guide, kind of a how-to guide for, for individuals, to give them an introduction to the planning process, where they have to go, what they need, and the various, uh, stages that they will have to go through. Um, I think on page five, uh, in the second paragraph on the introduction, if I can read it, it will, this handbook will lay out the process and help property owners and developers find their way. It's written in simple and concise terms and should be useful, whether this is your first lot line adjustment or you have developed multi-tenant commercial benches for twenty years. And, and what I hope it would be to, to take a look at this, see if this is something that, uh, the planning board would like to, uh, have staff, perhaps develop for the town so that we could post it on the website so that potential developers or even just individuals who have questions and concerns about issues of planning. I mean, for example, when I first came on the board here, I, I frankly didn't know a thing about, you know, what subdivision process was or, you know, site plan.
We're all the same situation where we started. It's all been, you know, on the job learning.
Right. And, you know, hopefully people, you know, if you, if you have this as a guide at home, you can take a look at it and, you know, well, you know, my neighbor's doing something, maybe I want to go down and say something. This is the process and this is when I have to do it and this is what I can do and this is what I can't do.
I think, if I just, uh, mentioned, I think Andre and I were talking about this a little bit the other day. And I think the, the main question we have is who our target audience really is on this. Is it the, the engineers and surveyors who are going to be the ones actually presenting the plans? Or do we want to target this more at the residents and, uh, the, the more general type of process without getting into the deep details of how the process works?
Potentially, um, you know, looking at the document quickly, I, I'm assuming that Dover had an outside contractor come in and actually, actually work with us on, off of it then.
It was all done in-house from my understanding, Chris Parker, the planning director there.
So you have spoken to them? That was my next.
I, I know Chris pretty well. I haven't talked to him specifically about this, but, uh, my, my understanding of Dover is that, uh, they had no money to do anything like that, that's contracted out there. Relatively tight in their budget. They've lost actually several staff over the last several years. Uh, so I believe this was done entirely in-house. Chris is actually, uh, probably one of the cutting-edge planners in terms of utilizing social media and new media technologies in terms of, uh, getting things out. He has, he runs a blog for the department. He's got Twitter feeds for the department, so he's.
So it's potentially might be worth picking his brain on, you know, who the audience was, the target audience and, and the rationale behind it.
So I know when I did the guide that I did in Rochester back in the late nineties, it was the citizen, the general population was the target audience. It was how quickly and concise can you get a broad overview of what the zoning board process was? That was the, the board I had most interaction with in my time in Rochester. Uh, we started doing a planning board handbook at the same time, but the chief planner and I had, uh, real hard time boiling something down into a pamphlet like we do for the ZBA. So ultimately that got dropped, but I think somewhere, I think somewhere between Dover and Rochester, there's a, there's something that I think certainly the staff could put together.
Yeah. Chris, well, it looks to me like these, these are two documents with just, you know, definitive, separate goals. One is guide to the ZBA, one is guide to the whole planning process. And I would think that we'd probably need both as well. And the ZBA guide would be more targeted to. I was just using that as a sample. But the, the ZBA guy would be more targeted to the, you know, the residents of the town, understanding the ZBA process, because those are, those are the folks that would typically get involved in that.
That's the most, people get involved with most is really ZBA.
Yeah.
Something is happening next door to them or, or they see a lot of violations.
Exactly, yeah.
My experience, uh, in Slickman days, you get a lot of, you know, people, and if they knew what was going on, you, you, you had to go look at everything. If they knew, a little easier. Because a lot of enforcement is by neighbors, looking at what's, what goes on in the neighborhood, is it legal or isn't legal?
So I think the ZBA document and the process in the ZBA is straightforward enough and, and known enough that that could be, it might be used by a developer, but I think it's more likely to be the target audience is, you know, residents of the town.
That was the target for Rochester, is those people who came to a ZBA meeting.
Don't understand the process.
Don't know what's going on.
Yeah. The, the, um, the developer's handbook, I think there's, there's dual audience and, you know, the first few pages are kind of, uh, I, to my mind, there are a marketing piece for economic development, that the first.
First statement.
Yeah, yeah, that, those first few pages could be separated out as a marketing piece and a piece, you know, for the, for the town residents to understand what the planning department does. Then you have the more detail, which would be the developers, and it would, uh, that would also be, I think, a marketing piece, the, the complete document to developers, looking at the town, saying, what do I have to do here?
Yeah, maybe for a business-friendly, yeah.
So I think you've got, like, that document serves two purposes. One is, you know, the, the preamble is what the layperson would want to look at, and then the rest of the document is what the developer would want to understand.
And the one thing I did see with the develop, with Dover's handbook is if you compare the handbook and you get to the more technical sections, once you get into section two in terms of the process, it's not all that much different than what's actually in the regulations in terms of the style and language. It's much more technical.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, I'm looking at this and, you know, the one from Dover, you know, first thing that strikes me is developer's handbook. Okay. Which means it's geared more, to me anyways, it's geared more to developers that are coming in, putting in a project, uh, something like that. Which I think, you know, that's great. Might be something that Londonderry can use. A lot of the stuff that does come in are simple lot line adjustments. You know, a homeowner's got enough, like he wants to sell off a lot, something like that. Or, you know, just, uh, something minor. I'd almost like to see something along this line that was just very simple, just gave the homeowner or the local user just the very basic stuff they truly needed to do. It's not going to cost them an arm and a leg to, to go through the process of doing it. You follow what I'm saying?
I think so.
And maybe also to free up some of your time so you're not actually doing the project for them. It's so minor, it's easier for you to do it than to explain it.
Right, right now, what we have on the website is the, the frequently asked questions, which was more geared towards the individual resident of town. Uh, these are the things, where can I get a copy of my plan, what zoning district I am? Uh, can I subdivide my parcel? Where do I find out information about this? So we've got some of this there, but we don't have it in a full-blown, technical, this is the process type of.
Excuse me, but that, that points to someone who would know where to look, right? So I think Dana, is what I'm hearing from you, maybe like a flow chart or something, where you go to the website, you, you know, you can, and what's your problem, and if this, then that, if that, then this, so on and so forth, dead end here, continue on, see this board, be prepared with X, Y, and Z, that sort of thing? Is that what you?
Absolutely, because believe it or not, there are still an awful lot of people in this world that don't use the web.
Okay, anything else? But, uh, something, uh, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll work at.
Sure.
How do you find the agenda?
Okay, any other business to come before the board? Sign that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Dana.
Second.
Second by Rick. All of those, if they are adjourned, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Or adjourned. Also, motion for.